Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Louis Hale is the minister at Southwest Church of Christ. He's going to lead us in the invocation this morning. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman David Greenwell to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand? I'll also note that Mr. Hale has been the minister at his church for 56 years. Younger than he looks. Come on up to the microphone. Thank you Reverend.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in prayer? Our holy Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we can call upon a loving God who knows our every need and who has the love and compassion and power to meet those needs. We're thankful for this great city in which we live and for the great country in which we live. We pray, Father, that you will bless those who are members of this council and all the different city officials that help to govern us, that they may do so wisely and well, realizing that the things they deal with will impact not only those of us now living, but even generations that are still to come, and help us all to so live in a way that when this life is over, that our home may be with you eternally. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Here are Oklahoma City firefighters. Spend a week outside of their stations helping to raise money for muscular dystrophy. Chief is here. Phil Sype is here. Why don't you all come up? And we have some special guests this morning from MDA. Why don't you all, everyone come up that's here? And we have a proclamation that we're going to read. We've had the opportunity to look all around the mayor's office this morning. Good morning. All right, we have a proclamation. Let's the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Professional Firefighters Association Local 157 is hosting the annual Fill the Boot campaign to benefit the Muscular Dystrophy Association, MDA. Whereas the firefighters have partnered with the MDA since 1954 and freely give their time to fill the boot and other MDA campaigns throughout the year. Whereas its state record was broken in 2011 by Oklahoma City residents generously responding to Fill the Boot for MDA with over $283,000. Whereas these donations support continued research of neuromuscular diseases and help over 2,000 families in Oklahoma with critical medical services and supplies for loved ones affected by these diseases. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim May 14th through 19th, 2012 as firefighter Fill the Boot Week in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens to support this worthwhile cause.
Let's show our appreciation to our firefighters and our constituents today. You want to talk about MDA?
I just want to thank the city of Oklahoma and the firefighters for giving us a hope for my children and for all the obstacles we're having to endure. And it just gives us a lot at the end of our tunnel to make us so much appreciated. Thank you so much.
We appreciate it. Thank you all very much for coming down and letting us meet you this morning. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you all. Thank you very much. See you next time. All right. Hey Phil, thanks. Thanks very much for coming down. Phil? And every month, the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club helps us honor one of our employees for being the employee of the month. And you can imagine, in an organization that has over 4,000 employees, selecting one is not easy, but it is quite an honor when that honor is bestowed. And Carla Chapman is here. Carla, I've lost you somewhere. Okay, come on up. Bring your staff too. Rebecca, Diane, come on up. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Carla Chapman has been a city employee for six and a half years and is a personal analyst in the operations division of the personnel department. Whereas Carla recruits, assesses, and places qualified individuals for city employment, works with and provides technical support to city departments, and is an expert in test development. Whereas Carla proactively addressed a significant challenge the police department 911 communications faced due to employee turnover, vacancies, and critical positions. Whereas Carla processed over 60 applicants for two simultaneous dispatcher training schools in 2011. The majority of the applicants were screened in and went through the selection board process. 16 trainees were selected. Whereas Carla is again working with 911 communications to process another 70 applicants for dispatcher training schools in April and May of this year. Whereas Carla also assists 911 communications with other personnel issues including promotions, employee incentive programs, part-time employee salaries, training, and the completion of a complex proposal to address employee schedules that included a comprehensive workload analysis. Whereas Carla, in addition to working with other city departments, has devoted many hours to recruiting and retaining quality employees at 911, thereby helping them to fulfill their mission. Whereas Carla is one of the countless city employees who works tirelessly behind the scenes to support city departments that provide essential services to external and internal customers. Her exemplary service, never-ending willingness to serve, positive attitude, energy, and professionalism are commendable. Whereas this council desires to recognize Carla Chapman for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Carla Chapman, May 2012, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Carla's still not official. We have to vote on this. So we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. They're all green. Congratulations. Let's show our appreciation. We have an outstanding group of 911 operators, but you can imagine that job is not for everyone. And proper screening on the front end is the best way to get good candidates in there so they can be properly trained to do the job in that moment of need. And I can only imagine how difficult it is to go through those countless stacks of resumes and try to figure out who would do great work for us in that situation. So if you want to put a plug in for anyone to sign up for future 911 operators, now's your chance.
Yes.
All right, there you go. Thank you Carla. Congratulations. This applause is for you. As regular watchers of City Hall know, we try to honor the young boys and girls who represent us so well on the athletic fields that go to schools inside Oklahoma City. And we are pleased to bring to the council chambers today the girls from Millwood High School who just finished a 24-6 record and state champions. Girls, come on up. We have three of the people here and a couple of the coaches, so come on up. And if you're thinking, seems like I've seen this school here before. This is the third girls' state title for Millwood basketball. We have a resolution. Let's the clerk to read it.
Whereas Millwood High School compiled a 2011-12 record of 24-6. And whereas the student athletes at Millwood demonstrate their winning attitude on and off the court, serving as ambassadors for their school and the city of Oklahoma City. Whereas Millwood Coach Spears and seniors Queera Dimmery and Lauren Fontino have been to the championship game three times before, finishing second each time. Whereas Millwood never let those setbacks define them. Whereas Millwood defeated Prague 64-50 to win the Class 3A Girls Basketball State Championship. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend and congratulate Millwood High School on winning the 2011-12 Class 3A Girls Basketball State Championship.
And Coach Spears, we're going to have to vote on this, so it's still not official yet. How about a motion? And a second? All right, cast your votes. Girls, look up. They're all green. Now let's show our appreciation to Millwood girls. Do you want to say anything, Coach?
I'd just like to thank the council for this honor and hopefully be back next year.
Coach Spears, I have a hunch you may just very well be. Thank you, girls. Congratulations for coming down. Coach, thank you. Congratulations. We also have a boys team here from Bishop McGinnis High School. I think the whole team got down here this morning. Come on up, guys. Yep, they're all here. All right, let's have the clerk read the resolution as we get settled.
Whereas Bishop McGinnis High School finished the 2011-12 regular season with a record of 21-6. Whereas the student athletes at Bishop McGinnis demonstrate their winning attitude on and off the court, serving as ambassadors for their school and the city of Oklahoma City. Whereas Bishop McGinnis trailed for much of the game before taking command in the third quarter to outscore Tulsa East Central. Whereas Bishop McGinnis defeated East Central 54-41 to win the Class 5A Boys Basketball State Championship. Whereas this is Bishop McGinnis's ninth title overall and their first since 2008. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby commend and congratulate Bishop McGinnis High School on winning the 2011-12 Class 5A Boys Basketball State Championship.
And once again, we'll have to vote. So guys, turn your attention toward the tree. Let's cast your votes. And it's unanimous. Let's show our appreciation.
On behalf of our principal David Morton and our athletic director Gary Sabely, we'd like to thank you guys for having us. These young guys are going to be leaders one day, and we're excited that you guys have us down here, and we thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all for representing us so well. Thank you very much. You bet. Let's show our appreciation again. Thank you. Congratulations. Where did I leave off? Welcome. It is also Police Appreciation Month. Chief City is here, and you brought some of your men down here, right? Come on down. Everybody's here in the chambers. Come on down. Who do we have coming down, chief?
This is most of my executive staff, deputy chiefs, and majors who run the different divisions of the police department.
We have a proclamation for Police Appreciation Month. I'll have the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas police officers make a valuable contribution to our community by serving and protecting our citizens. The dedication and desire of Oklahoma City police officers to preserve a peaceful quality of life for all citizens is their foremost goal. Whereas daily life-threatening hazards are an accepted requirement of the profession and most appreciated by a grateful public. Whereas certain events within the month of May lend themselves towards the positive recognition of Oklahoma City law enforcement personnel. The following activities are planned. May 1st, National Law Day. May 4th, Oklahoma City Police Department Awards Banquet. May 13th through 19th, National Police Week. May 15th, National Police Officers Memorial Day. May 18th, Oklahoma City Police Department Memorial Service. And May 18th, Oklahoma State Law Enforcement Memorial Service. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2012 as Police Appreciation Month in Oklahoma City in recognition of the outstanding performance, service, and competence exhibited by the Oklahoma City police officers.
Let's show our appreciation for our police department.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the mayor and council for recognizing this next month as Police Appreciation Month. We do have, like you said, several things we're doing to celebrate that. But also want to keep in mind, even though we have all these uniformed officers up here, keep in mind that there's a huge number of non-sworn, as Carla Chapman that we recognized earlier worked real hard to hire to support the staff out there. And I really appreciate the community and the citizens supporting the police department as they do. Thank you.
You bet. We love our police officers around here. Thank you all very much for what you do. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Looks like we still have item 3D to vote on. That's the appointment of Meg Salier to the Civic Center Foundation. But a motion? All right, cast your votes. That appointment passes unanimously. Move on to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 24th. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 17th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, outside of the one listed in your agenda, item 10A, there's a couple of others. Starting on page 10, under item 8G1, item E21 Southwest 34th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And moving to page 11, under item 8H1A 2127 Glen Ellen Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F 1808 East Park, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item H 5713 South Char-Tel, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item Q 2312 Northwest 16th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item S 2828 Northeast 18th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item T 4400 Northwest 20th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item U 137 Southeast 22nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, item X 516 Northwest 49th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Or recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority? There are three items. All right, comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There's one item. Okay, comments or questions on the EAT? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
[inaudible]
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations? Looks like we're ready to go. All right, cast your votes. Consent docket passed unanimously. Nothing on the concurrence docket today, so we move on to item eight on the agenda. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward 2 at 2912 and 2916 Paseo. Ed?
Has anybody signed up on either A1 or A3? Okay. I'd move for approval. I had no opposition, and the planning commission approved, recommended approval.
All right, do we have a second on item 8A1? Cast your votes. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1045 Hoyt Avenue. It's R1 single-family residential, and it would become a C3 community commercial district, amended to the C1 neighborhood commercial district that it already holds its status. Skip?
I haven't received any calls on it. I did have one concern, and that is the planning commission recommended, or at least stated in the staff report, that it was amended by the planning commission. I assume that it was in reference to a, well, was it fenced? I mean, the...
The only amendment was from C3 to C1, which is a neighborhood commercial district. That was the, this is a straight zoning...
So this was the only amendment?
Right.
That was it?
Yes, this will be C1 if the council approves it, which is neighborhood.
Okay, all right, all right. I recommend we move ahead.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A2. Comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 300 Northwest 62nd Street. It's an R1 single-family residential district, and it would become a simplified planned unit development district. Ed?
No opposition. It is moving from R1 to a sped. It's completely surrounded by commercial developments, so I'd move for approval.
Okay, do we have a second? Voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B?
I think they want the emergency.
Okay. Ed, we think they want the emergency on item 8A3. You okay with that? Okay. Cast your votes. And it looks like we have enough votes. The emergency passes unanimously. All right. Item 8B is a proposal to close a 20-foot alley in Ward 7 just south of Southeast 29th Street. Skip, you okay with this?
A little confused about it. It seems like the alley is already closed. And I guess my big question is that if this is only for purposes of safety concerns to the property owners and not for purposes of addressing any type of traffic issues, is that the issue here?
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. What happened was when my client, Justin Frisbee, purchased one of the properties that abuts the alley, he was told or advised that the alley was already closed. And for at least in excess of 10 years, and all practical purposes, the alley has been closed. It's fenced off, grass has grown up through it, people park cars. At one point, someone advised one of the property owners that the alley technically was still open. Therefore, someone was cited. And so what we're trying to do now is just go through the proper procedure to formally close the alley so that they can have better security. At one point, somebody was accessing the alley and breaking into buildings. So what they want to do is just close it so they can secure it. It doesn't have any effect on traffic. Traffic still circulates down Byers and Durland and Southeast 29th. So planning commission recommended approval, and staff found no one favorable.
So it has absolutely no use for ingress and egress as it relates to the property owners that are situated in...
Correct. And councilman, I have a series of pictures. You can see that although it's technically open, you can't actually travel down it. Like I said, grass has grown up. It's fenced, just a matter of feet outside of the street. So no one has actually driven down or accessed this alley for at least 10 years. It just was never formally closed through the council and then district court.
Okay. Pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8B. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8C, the third time we've seen this before, and this is a final hearing. This closes a loophole on the international residential code.
Move the item.
Anyway, comments or questions on 8C? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
They're requesting the emergency?
Cast your votes, and the emergency passed unanimously. Item 8D is also an ordinance on a final hearing today. This would establish a taxi stand on Robinson in Ward 6. I think we're ready to go on this. How about a motion?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8E would make some alterations to our animal welfare policies, and Bob Teener is here to give us more details. Bob?
I thought I'd just briefly explain the changes in this ordinance. We've kind of combined different things. The first issue is the, if you recall, back in October, we talked about the community cat program where we'll trap feral cats, spay and neuter, vaccinate for rabies, and then put them back into their neighborhood. This amendment will allow us to waive or eliminate the three-day hold period on stray animals. It'd help us get the animals in and out quicker. And that's really the change on that part. The second change is we're eliminating the customer reserve option out at the shelter. Back in 2001, we created this program. At that time, there was a real low interest in adoption, and we would lose a lot of stray animals that were not picked up by their owners. So the staff felt that we could allow the citizens to look at the stray kennels, and if they identified an animal that they felt might be adoptable, they would put in a, we called it a red alert, or they called it a red alert. And then after their holding time passed, then we would contact that citizen to see if they wanted that animal back. Well, now, as you all are aware, we have a real strong adoption program at the shelter. And most of those animals that, back in 2001, may have been passed over and euthanized, are now either brought into the shelter by our staff, or they're sent to a rescue group. And so really, the number of customer requests that we have is pretty low, and it really creates more hardship for the staff because we have to contact, if somebody requests one, we have to contact them. If they're not there, then it takes multiple calls. If they decide they don't want the animal, then we have to do something else with it. It's really, it will really make us more efficient at the shelter. It allows us to be able to handle the walk-in customers. We get about 300 to 500 a day. It allows us to answer other phone calls that, right now, we're taking time trying to contact citizens. So that's probably a big piece, but we really don't feel that it's going to be a major impact because there's not a lot of people doing that now because of the...
Bob, will this have an impact on the feral cat communities we've got?
No, the feral cats are not adoptable.
Okay.
So they wouldn't be, this is a separate issue.
Right.
And then the last is to eliminate a requirement. Up until 2008, we required a deposit on our cat and dog traps, and then when someone would put a hold on an animal, we found out that there's a state law that says you have to deposit that money directly into the bank on the same day or the next day. And so we haven't done, we haven't collected those deposits since 2008, so we're just trying to clean the ordinance up by eliminating that section of the code. So those are the three primary changes.
Okay. And this is just being introduced today, and we're sitting a public hearing for May 15th.
That's correct.
Larry, do you have a question?
I just have a comment. In the write-up, on the first page, under background, the next-to-last sentence in there, talking about the cats are abandoned or dumped house cats. This statement is made, "They are normally well-tolerated by residents and generally do well to stay healthy in their natural environment." The words, wording, "normally well-tolerated by residents," I've had a number of complaints. I don't know whether the rest of the council has over cats. We do not require cats to be confined like we do dogs, right, Bob? They can run loose.
That's correct.
And I've had a number of complaints over my tenure here at the council of residents who have complained about neighborhood cats who get into their flower gardens and cause havoc. So I just wanted to make that comment. I don't know whether that's generally a comment that the rest of you, the council people, have heard or not, but I just wanted to go in record of saying that. Thank you, Your Honor.
As part of the program, if we trap, if the humane... As part of the program, if we trap, if, if the Humane Society traps a feral cat and there's been complaints, we won't return that cat to that neighborhood. It's only, if we receive a complaint, those cats will either be sent to a rescue group or they'd be euthanized. So that provision is in there. And the ordinance also includes a way for our staff to determine what a feral cat is as opposed to a house pet.
Bob, thank you. Okay, we need a motion then to accept 8D and set that final hearing, or set the public hearing. All right, cast your votes. We're voting on item 8E. It passed unanimously. Item 8F is also an ordinance that's being introduced, and Cindy Richards is here from our legal department.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Cindy Richard with Municipal Counselor's Office. Most of you may remember the discussion we had a month or so ago about taxi cab parking and that sort of thing. When those ordinances were going through council, some of the taxi parking things moved over to Chapter 56 out of title, out of Chapter 32. Chapter 56 is our vehicles for hire, which is normally where you find taxi items. When we made that move, we neglected to see that our process for our parking enforcement civilians to issue citations to unmanned vehicles was limited to parking violations in Chapter 32. So, now that we've moved some of those to Chapter 56, we need to make sure that that process also embraces those violations. So this is really just a housekeeping measure to make sure that our parking enforcement folks can issue citations on Chapter 56 violations. So it just adds a little phrase that says, "And those in Chapter 56."
All right, questions for Cindy on this item? All right, how about a motion? No, go ahead, Skip.
Is this going to change the, the, the amount of the citations?
I'm sorry, change the amount?
Yes.
No. The, the amount of the citation is set in a, it's in Chapter 32, and it's in the various parking violations. It's a, a chart that has all the amounts. This doesn't do anything except say, okay, the, the parking violations that are now found in Chapter 56, we can use this process for unmanned vehicles that are in violation of parking regulations. In this case, it would be taxis. We can still have the parking civilians who issue the notices for parking violations. They can do that for those also.
So is, is, is the purpose of this directed towards the taxi cabs?
It's directed toward all parking violations where the vehicle is unmanned, that the parking civilians can issue the citations rather than a police officer having to do that. It just maintains the status quo. When we moved the taxi ordinances over to Chapter 56 last month, it moved it out of the regulatory scheme of, of Chapter 32 as far as using the civilian parking enforcement.
So prior to that, civilians could not issue citations to unmanned?
Yes, they could. Okay. Everything used to be in Chapter 32, and when we made the amendments regarding the taxis a month or so ago, it moved some of those parking violations to Chapter 56.
But not all of them?
Well, no, most of the parking violations for, for cars in general are in Chapter 32.
Okay.
And so, the status quo was changed when those few that were related to taxis were moved to Chapter 56. So now we want to make sure that we can go back to the old status quo and use the civilian parking enforcement personnel to issue citations in the same way that they always have for taxis.
Okay, that's what I, so it sounds like this is more directed towards the taxi violation issued?
Only the taxis were moved out of Chapter 32.
Okay.
Ready to vote on item 8F? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. I'm going to suggest we move up item 8O. We have a person who's come in here to present to council an executive session, and the person is only here for a certain time window. So, would request a motion on item 8O that will allow us to go into executive session for probably 10 minutes and maybe, maybe 20 minutes. And I advise those that are seated here in the council chambers that we will be back, but it will be a few minutes back in executive session before we come back. Need a motion that'll move it?
Move it.
Cast your votes. Okay, we'll be going into executive session, we'll return.
We are back from executive session, obviously, and Francis, I believe when we left for executive session, we had finished item eight F, and so we'll pick it up with item eight G. Okay. Item eight G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight G?
May I have a question about that? I, if I can find where I made my notes, there is a dwelling that's listed on both lists, and it was stricken from the list under eight H. Fifty-seven thirteen South Charlton was stricken. It remains on G one B, and I wondered if that was a mistake or I'm not...
Well, let's ask Charles if he knows anything about it.
Yeah, it's a burnout. It's still on the dilapidated list because of the roof. The owner did secure the property, which is, if it's completely open like that, like it was, we put them on both lists so we can secure them immediately and then get less demolition and proceed.
All right, ready to vote on item eight G? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight H is a list of unsecured structures. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak or any item listed under eight H? Yes, sir, please come forward. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Wilson Brewer, and the property belongs to Avery Chapel AME Church. It's sixteen twenty Northeast Fourteenth Street, and it's an unsecured property and shed. We have secured a person to secure that piece of property and to remove the shed starting Wednesday, and we are, we're going to fix up the piece of property. It's red in the back of the church, so we would like for y'all to give us an opportunity to do that.
All right, Skip?
Mr. Brewer, is it on the church property?
No, it's red beside the church.
Okay, all right. Well, with those plans, if you would coordinate it with Mr. Locke, I have no problems giving them additional time in order to cure the issues.
Yeah, I don't know that they'll need additional time. It sounds like if you're working with Charles and you're going to work on it starting Wednesday, you'll probably be okay. Is that right, Charles?
Yes, it's, that'd be fine.
Okay. Just stay in touch with him, and if you're following through on what you indicated, I don't think you'll have any need to be down here again.
Okay.
Good luck with the property.
Okay, thank you.
Is property sixteen twenty, is that also the church property?
Yes.
Sixteen sixteen and sixteen twenty?
No, just sixteen twenty.
Just sixteen, sixteen twenty?
Yes, that's what it says. Sixteen twenty northeast is sixteen sixteen also?
Yeah, it's also on our list. Is the church not the owner of that property?
I didn't, I didn't receive a notice on that. I'll look it up, but, but we'll fix up both.
It shows a different owner.
It shows who?
It shows a different owner at sixteen sixteen.
Sixteen sixteen's a different owner?
That's what I thought.
All right. I was just curious because of the close proximity of it and it's supposed to be towards the churches.
It's, it's red next door to it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brewer. All right, we're ready to vote on item eight H. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight I is a public hearing. It has to do with our consolidated plan. It amends the second year of our five-year plan. Russell's here to give us more details.
Morning, American Council. Just while we're getting set up here, I wanted to introduce some of my staff, Jared Shaleed, who put together a PowerPoint today, has been working on this, and then Mike Barras, who is new to my staff. Mike is a planner for, and he is heading up the Housing and Community Development Division. That's a position that's been vacant for about a year since Wiley Rice left, and Mike, we were fortunate to uncover him, and he started a couple of weeks, about a month ago now, so I wanted you to know who he was because he'll be dealing with the consolidated plan as we implement it. I come to you this time every year on the consolidated plan. This is really the master planning document for the federal grants that we receive. We are required to apply to HUD every year to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and this is our formal application process. It is a five-year plan. This is the formula for the third action year, so this is the third piece of that plan. We do a lot of things with our grants, as you know. A lot of it directed towards housing, so we do housing rehabilitation, housing rental, home buyer assistance, new housing, neighborhood revitalization, which is something I'm going to emphasize today in terms of a new direction that we're trying to take with the program, economic development and homeless assistance as well. There are four main grants that we receive on a formula basis from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, being Community Development Block Grant, which has been around for a long time now, as well as the Home Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is largely directed towards homeless assistance, and then housing opportunities for people with AIDS. Unfortunately, the grants have continued their downward spiral. This has been a trend that we've been subjected to at the federal level for some period of time. From two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, we took a pretty heavy hit again, a total of about eighteen and a half percent reduction in funding. The concern for me is that while the funding's going down, the need is increasing, so we're getting an increasing gap there in our ability to be able to address the services that these grants were originally assigned for. If you look at that breakdown according to those four different grant categories, the largest hit is in home funds. That is down a third from last year. That's a, that's a huge hit. Basically, lost about a million dollars in terms of our capacity to be able to support that program. We also had a nine percent reduction in Community Development Block Grant, which is the more flexible fund that we have available, and so it hurts our ability to be able to be creative with the programs that we do. Just as a recap on what the, the purpose of the plan, the annual action year plan, it is that application we have to make to HUD every year. We'd have a fairly extensive citizen engagement process. We had several meetings. We had meetings out at the West Town Center. We had meetings in City Hall. We take that input into developing what our priorities are with the plan, and then we assign the amount of funding that we have been advised we're going to receive according to what those priorities are. It don't change a lot, but in, in this year, we're introducing the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, and so we have funds allocated out of both Community Development Block Grant and the Home Funds to be able to support that program, and I'll go over that in a little bit more. So the process for, for approval, it's for you today, and that's the final piece of the process before we submit it to Housing and Urban Development. Just looking at the allocations with Community Development Block Grant, we have about a total of just over five million dollars. Now, that does include some program income and recaptured funds, so it's a little more than what the allocation was, and that's standard process. We do recapture and, and have a little bit more money, but obviously, as, as the funds go down, we're going to have less money to recapture over time. The main one I want to emphasize there is the Strong Neighborhoods. About six hundred and ten thousand dollars that we're allocating towards that program. The intent of the program is to consolidate our services, whereas we've been dispersing these, these funds over a large number of eligible projects within the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area for a long period of time. We've decided to concentrate that into just three neighborhoods. There might be, there'll still be services available to the other neighborhoods, but the intent is to be able to tip these particular neighborhoods involved. So we're funneling Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds into those neighborhoods. We're working with the Neighborhood Alliance, Nicole Franklin, who's on the board. We've been working with her and Georgie Rasko. That's a very good partnership. They've been meeting with some of the neighborhoods here in the last couple of weeks. The response has been good. We're very hopeful that this is going to work, and I think if we can set this up, if it works, it becomes a great model, and hopefully, we can expand that program to be able to provide a sustainable path forward for these neighborhoods. When we were just doing a house or two in each neighborhood, it was never enough to turn those neighborhoods around. This is a way, not only of protecting our investment, but protecting the investment that people in those communities are making. So it's a really critical change, I think, for the way we do things.
Russell?
Counselman?
May I ask what three neighborhoods have been selected?
They are Claussen Tenpen, which is over there on Sixteenth and Claussen, west of there, Claussen North Highland Park, which is the neighborhood just east of Broadway Extension on Thirteenth going forward, and then Cobertson's East Highland, which is over in the, in the JFK area. These, these areas that we've chosen have been based on our ability to be able to turn around those particular sections, so they're not in exact alignment with neighborhood boundaries, so some of them have multiple neighborhoods involved.
Well, those sound like three good areas to, to work on, to focus on, and I know we could probably list more than ten or fifteen neighborhoods that would be good candidates, but I still think, and I wasn't involved in this, but every time I go into the Capitol Hill area, we have an opportunity, because we've got a fledgling kind of commercial area that could, combined with a stronger neighborhood, really take off, I believe. So in future years, maybe we could focus on that, and I've seen examples recently of where, when we focus on it and we get a strong public-private partnership involved, it's really exciting what can be accomplished in those areas.
Well, I couldn't agree more, and the public-private partnership is, is the critical piece of this. It's not just the city allocating funds to these neighborhoods, but the neighborhoods are really going to have to step up, not so much financially, but they're going to have to provide a lot of in-kind and capacity building. .............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. The concern for me is that while the funding's going down, the need is increasing. So, we're getting an increasing gap there in our ability to be able to address the services that these grants were originally assigned for. If you look at that breakdown according to those four different grant categories, the largest hit is in home funds. That is down a third from last year. That's a huge hit. Basically, lost about a million dollars in terms of our capacity to be able to support that program. We also had a nine percent reduction in Community Development Block Grant, which is the more flexible fund that we have available, and so it hurts our ability to be able to be creative with the programs that we do. Just as a recap on what the purpose of the plan, the annual action year plan, it is that application we have to make to HUD every year. We'd have a fairly extensive citizen engagement process. We had several meetings. We had meetings out at the West Town Center. We had meetings in City Hall. We take that input into developing what our priorities are with the plan, and then we assign the amount of funding that we have been advised we're gonna receive according to what those priorities are. It don't change a lot, but in this year, we're introducing the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, and so we have funds allocated out of both Community Development Block Grant and the Home Funds to be able to support that program, and I'll go over that in a little bit more. So, the process for approval, it's for you today, and that's the final piece of the process before we submit it to Housing and Urban Development. Just looking at the allocations with Community Development Block Grant, we have about a total of just over five million dollars. Now, that does include some program income and recaptured funds, so it's a little more than what the allocation was, and that's the standard process. We do recapture and have a little bit more money, but obviously, as the funds go down, we're gonna have less money to recapture over time. The main one I wanted to emphasize there is the Strong Neighborhoods. About six hundred and ten thousand dollars that we're allocating towards that program. The intent of the program is to consolidate our services, whereas we've been dispersing these funds over a large number of eligible projects within the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area for a long period of time. We've decided to concentrate that into just three neighborhoods. There might be, there'll still be services available to the other neighborhoods, but the intent is to be able to tip these particular neighborhoods into sustainability. So, we're funneling Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds into those neighborhoods. We're working with the Neighborhood Alliance, Nicole Franklin, who's on the board. We've been working with her and Georgie Rasko. That's a very good partnership. They've been meeting with some of the neighborhoods here in the last couple of weeks. The response has been good. We're very hopeful that this is gonna work, and I think if we can set this up, if it works, it becomes a great model, and hopefully, we can expand that program to be able to provide a sustainable path forward for these neighborhoods. When we were just doing a house or two in each neighborhood, it was never enough to turn those neighborhoods around. This is a way, not only of protecting our investment, but protecting the investment that people in those communities are making. So, it's a really critical change, I think, for the way we do things.
Russell?
Councilman?
May I ask what three neighborhoods have been selected?
They are Claussen Tenpen, which is over there on Sixteenth and Claussen, west of there, Claussen North Highland Park, which is the neighborhood just east of Broadway Extension on Thirteenth going forward, and then Colbertson's East Highland, which is over in the JFK area. These areas that we've chosen have been based on our ability to be able to turn around those particular sections, so they're not in exact alignment with neighborhood boundaries. So, some of them have multiple neighborhoods involved.
Well, those sound like three good areas to work on, to focus on, and I know we could probably list more than ten or fifteen neighborhoods that would be good candidates. But I still think, and I wasn't involved in this, but every time I go into the Capitol Hill area, we have an opportunity, 'cause we've got a fledgling kind of commercial area that could, combined with a stronger neighborhood, really take off, I believe. So, in future years, maybe we could focus on that, and I've seen examples recently of where, when we focus on it and we get a strong public-private partnership involved, it's really exciting what can be accomplished in those areas.
Well, I couldn't agree more, and the public-private partnership is the critical piece of this. It's not just the city allocating funds to these neighborhoods, but the neighborhoods are really gonna have to step up, not so much financially, but they're gonna have to provide a lot of in-kind and capacity building there, and then the Neighborhood Alliance is gonna help us, not only in that capacity building, but developing partnerships that we may never have been able to secure before with private sponsors, private corporations out there, who could feel that their investment in a neighborhood would then be protected. So, I think it's gonna leverage a lot more capacity than we've had in the past. That's one of the, I think, major strengths of the program.
I want to interrupt you for a second. On the strategic neighborhood initiatives, one of the areas that I think all three of these areas need are some improvements in infrastructure, which is typically a city kind of operation.
Correct.
In your budgeting, do you have money set aside for infrastructure improvements?
That's what we're looking for out of the CDBG funds. It's possible that, you know, some of these capital improvements are gonna be much larger than we can afford, but if we can identify those as part of a long-term strategic plan, then those can be incorporated into the next year of bond. Now, that's a long-term plan.
Very long-term.
Yeah, it is very, very long-term, but that's the sort of the level of investment that we need to make to be able to flip them around. I did wanna say that Capitol Hill, College Hill was one of those candidate neighborhoods, didn't make it to the final three. Neighborhood Alliance is still working with them and a couple of other neighborhoods to be able to get them up to the level where they will be able to participate in the next round of this. So, that's the intent there.
And I appreciate that very much. I just think it's got a lot of potential. I'm probably over there more than in some of these other neighborhoods, so I just have a better feel, and if we could somehow connect that eventually to the Stockyards area and just, you know, strengthen that whole kind of corridor, and then continue development of the river, I just think there's tremendous opportunity in that part of Oklahoma City.
And David, there are some other programs available on the commercial area thing. We've gotten involved in that, the Economic Development Committee, who will help strengthen some of these commercial districts in hope that there'll be, the fallout will be the improvements in the neighborhoods adjacent to them.
I'm not gonna make a big point of this, but I was at another city recently, and we went into a neighborhood that was probably developed back in the thirties, maybe the forties, I'm not sure, and to see it now, it's the place young people wanna move to, and they have really fixed up those homes, and it's very encouraging as to what can be done to a neighborhood that we might have kind of given up on.
It's a pretty strong national trend, and another part of that, of course, is strengthening the schools, and I know that several of you are involved in that, and that's a really key component. They have to be a partner in this deal. We have to have them included in it to make it work.
I would agree with Councilman Greenwell one hundred percent. Having been a part of this whole issue, when we were looking at the different neighborhoods and looking at it from a geographical layout as far as the totality of the city, those were some very, you know, major concerns, and South Oklahoma City, Capitol Hill, was one of those areas that, you know, several of the individuals felt like that should have been identified and selected as one of the recipients of this program. But, you know, as the process was ultimately completed, we have accepted the neighborhoods. I'm not complaining, but I just feel like that there is, you know, should have been, I think, a better venue in reference to the geographical identification of areas that had also some great potential that had not been equally served or fairly served in the past, and, you know, here I sit, and, you know, two of the neighborhoods are in Ward Seven. But again, I still feel like that there was, you know, some opportunity for Capitol Hill to have been one of those identified neighborhoods for the hope and the potential, I feel like, that exists there, as stated by Councilman Greenwell. So, I just hope that in the future, that as we go through this process, that we have a little bit more passion as it relates to, you know, other parts of the city that have not been, you know, well-considered in reference to the economic development and the potential that they would have in reference to growth and benefiting from these type of programs. But, you know, and I know it's been a difficult test, you know. You've done a great job in reference to, you know, going through the process twice in reference to because of some of the concerns that some of the committee members had in the selection process, so, you know, it is what it is now, but I just hope that in the future, we do take the concerns of Councilman Greenwell in reference to, you know, Capitol Hill.
All right, Larry, then Pete.
Yeah, Russell, you, I think Councilman Ryan brought up a point, was talking about the infrastructure. How much importance was the 2007 bond program given as far as selecting of the neighborhoods? Because there are three neighborhoods that come to my mind in Ward Three that have monies involved, new streets and sidewalks that are already appropriated. Was that considered in deciding whether or not that neighborhood should be a part of the Strong Neighborhood Initiative or not?
Yeah, it was considered. I mean, we had thirty-five different factors that we included in that consideration process, and, you know, to all the comments made so far, it's certainly not easy, and we'd love to be able to do more. In the end, it came down to where we felt that there was, you know, the greatest capacity with those particular neighborhoods, which ones seemed to be the best prepared to be able to make that transition into a self-sustaining neighborhood. And it's, you know, there's objective elements to that consideration and there's subjective elements, and we went through as deliberative a process as I think we could go through, and these are the three that were selected, and obviously, there are gonna be others that are, we think are great candidates as well, which is why we've asked Neighborhood Alliance to work with us in continuing to work with those other neighborhoods, so that we can build those up as well. There are also eligibility criteria, and I'm not sure, I'm not, I don't know which neighborhoods you're referring to, but there are also eligibility required criteria as specified by Housing and Urban Development. I mean, they had to meet certain thresholds for income there as well. So, they may or may not, I don't know. I'd be happy to look.
Are there some federal, are there some federal guidelines that also kick in?
Yes.
Okay, that's, all right, Pete?
Yeah, I, along with David, I'm a little disappointed that the Capitol Hill neighborhood didn't make it in. I thought it was in. I thought, I was remiss in not looking this over, because I had earlier thought that the Capitol Hill neighborhood was in this.
Well, it's in that second phase where the Neighborhood Alliance will be continuing to work with that neighborhood. There were some, there were some real strengths on the College Hill side versus the Capitol Hill neighborhood side, and we're gonna continue to work with them, get them up to the point where they're going to be the next viable candidate, and that's what, you know, we wanna do. And, you know, working in Capitol Hill, working on the I-240 corridor, obviously, there's a huge need for additional neighborhood assistance.
It seemed to me it was a good candidate, because there's so much going on. There's a Main Street organization that's going on, there's a kind of a revitalization effort going on out there, and I, the libraries there, I mean, so many, it has so many bones, it seemed to me, that it was, it was, it might have been easier to build on than some of the others. I understand Tenpen, I do understand that one. I mean, we've been there a long time, been working in that one, but I, but does this have to be approved today? Are we entering some kind of a deadline that this has to be approved today?
Well, we're not asking for the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative. We're approving the consolidated plan. We do, we're on a tight timeline to be able to meet HUD's submission requirements on that.
Because I have, I'd like to go with you a little bit more about the Capitol Hill question, but I don't wanna do something that's gonna delay it if it, by putting it off for a couple of weeks, if it would create a problem in timing. You can tell me that, and I'll ask all the questions here.
Pete, y'all look at the thirty-five criteria that they used, and I think that's important to understand, the criteria that were developed over the time, and how the neighborhoods were selected, meeting those requirements established in those thirty-five different areas.
Well, no, I knew that before. I just thought that the Capitol Hill neighborhood was in. I thought it was one of the three that had been selected.
Not in the first round, but I'll be happy to talk to you more about it.
The other thing is, I see that there's a substantial amount of money in this going to the Community Action Agency. I wonder if some of the things that Community Action Agency does could not be done in public-private partnerships as opposed to funnel it all through this agency that seems more interested in sustaining itself than it does serving the public, in my opinion. Is that mandatory, that all of that go through the Community Action Agency? I mean, aren't there other entities that could do some of these things?
I'm sure there are.
Have we ever looked for them?
There's been a longstanding relationship there. I mean, they have a program that's been established that provides that service. Each of these services that are provided through the grants are a lot less than, I think, what the demand is out there, so it's a matter of prioritizing, you know, allocation of scarce resources.
I just see them accumulating assets that are not, in my opinion, being utilized in the best interest of the community, and I, very valuable assets, it seems to me, on Twenty-Fifth Street especially.
They aren't getting that much from us. Where's their other funding come from?
Well, most of theirs comes, they have a formula grant program as well.
From the federal government?
Yeah, Community Services Block Grant.
Okay. Russell, you're, well, hold on, are you done?
But, Councilman, I'll be happy to look into that, and we can talk some more on.
Okay. All right, how about David, then Ed?
And I didn't mean to be critical of the selection process, 'cause I didn't really, I wasn't a participant in it, so I can't really speak on it. My point is, I just think we can do more things, and certainly, it demonstrates we need more money or more resources, I'm sorry, maybe that's not the right term. And so, I think we could, from a city's perspective, reach out to the business community a little bit more effectively and try to get more investment, more involvement, you know, try to work on the private side of this equation of a public-private partnership. Let's do that, but also, I think there's some opportunities by working closer with the county of Oklahoma County to see where there may be, for example, duplications of services, since we cover so much of the same area, and perhaps, we could reach out to the county of Oklahoma to maybe have some type of a joint meeting to see where we could begin the process of seeing if there's ways both entities could save money, use that savings to put forth to improving these neighborhoods and do a much better job than what we're currently doing. I mean, it hopefully would free up resources that could then be put back into these older neighborhoods, revitalize the city, you know, like the saying goes, the, a chain is only as strong as its weakest link, and if we focus on these areas that, you know, have seen better times and work to improve them, I think it enhances the whole city. Thank you.
I agree.
Well, I would just point out that this, the, on the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, I mean, your recommendation was to do two neighborhoods, right, and that was our working, and then you chose two, and then you met some resistance, and then we expanded that to three, but the idea is that you wanna overwhelm, you wanna concentrate your funds in a limited number of neighborhoods to have maximum impact, so, I mean, to some extent, expanding from two to three is kind of, I mean, it's a compromise, but it wasn't your initial recommendation.
I mean, two was kind of, you know, that was a figure that we were aiming for, we thought was manageable for us, and I know that the Neighborhood Alliance is feeling that maybe we've asked them to bite off more than we originally promised they'd be committed to doing. So, there is a question of stretching the resource in that respect. You know, the difficulty is that all these neighborhoods are eligible, all in need, and I think, you know, with enough effort, can all be turned around. It's just the capacity to be able to do it, so, you know, we'll work with, we'll work with three. We've been trying to be more creative with the administrative component of the federal grants, so that we can be able to allocate more resources to be able to accomplish that, and still remain in compliance, of course, as well.
I think if there are any number of neighborhoods throughout the city that could benefit from some help, but we have a very limited resource to do that with, and I think that Russell's people have done a great job identifying areas where our resources can best be used. And we had, up until this strategic neighborhood initiative came around, we were spending lots of, the same amount of money on a hundred different projects that really were nice, but they didn't have an impact in terms of bringing the neighborhood up to such a standard that private investment would come back in the neighborhood because they wanted to be there. And I think that's the objective, overall, I mean, scrape all the wording away, the objective is to get these neighborhoods in such a condition that private investment will come in there and rebuild the houses and continue to improve those neighborhoods, just because they wanna be there, not because there's an incentive, not because the city wants to partner with them, because the neighborhood itself is of such quality that people wanna come back to it. And we've got some examples of that that we can point to, where that's exactly what's happened. There were some private investments, public-private partnerships, they were very successful, and now the private sector is moving in on its own hook with its own money and its own initiative to reach into those neighborhoods. So, I think we need to realize that this is a limited program, we can't touch all the bases, no matter how deserving they might be. We are trying to focus in on areas where our investment will make a difference, a significant enough difference that private sector will come back into those neighborhoods. Russell, I'm sorry.
No, that was great. Thank you for that.
All right, we're ready to vote then on item eight I. All right, and Russell, have you gone over eight J yet, or is that a different question?
They're sort of companion items, so.
Yeah. You, okay. Any questions on eight J? We'll vote both of them separately, of course, but eight J is the adoption of year three of the five-year plan. Okay. How about a motion then on item eight I? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then the public hearing on item eight J as well? So, there's a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on item eight J? Okay, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Russell.
Thank you. Thanks very much for the comments.
Item eight K is a request for revocable right-of-way use permits. OKC Pride will be holding the OKC Pride Festival 2012, May nineteenth, on West Sheridan Avenue, and that's in Ward Six. Is there anyone here from this organization that'd like to speak today? Yeah, come on up. We will need your name and address for the record.
I'm Hunter Sanders. I live at sixty-five hundred North Grand Boulevard, number one sixty-five, seven-three-one-one-six. I'm here with Jeremy Kreitz. We're both on the board of the Oklahoma City Pride Organization. We're here today to, as it says in the agenda, to get the revocable permits to put on the annual Pride Festival and the Pride Parade. I don't know, y'all have any questions or anything I can answer?
No.
I do have a question. This is Oklahoma City's grandest, most distinguished parade, I think, and it's just, and it's a tremendous asset for our city. One thing that is a little deflating in past years has been the amount of trash that gets accumulated, not necessarily from the people in the parade, but the people on the side, especially Thirty-Nine. It can be substantial at the end. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's our largest parade, it's thousands and thousands of people. Do you have anything in place this year?
Yes, we're actually working with several volunteer cleanup crews, and then I also have budget approval for a street sweeper to kind of help clean all that up, so we can sweep the trash into the street, and the street sweeper will make passes to clean it up quickly and a lot better than just us as an organization trying to pick it up ourselves.
I think the Sierra Club and Transition OKC are trying to make a float to enter, and if you could spread the word, it's just, it's a large float with chicken wire around the top. If that could go at the end, they're gonna take all of that to American Recycling. You don't have to separate it, just if everybody could come and bring their bottles, their cans, their, they don't want paper in it, but if you could, if everybody could just kind of throw that in, then I think we could make.
Yeah, that would, that would be great. They haven't, I haven't seen them apply yet, or their application hasn't come through yet, absolutely.
It's actually my float, but we're gonna, we're gonna work together and build it. And so, if you could, if you could spread the word.
All right, absolutely.
And put us at the end.
Oh, I can. That's easy to work out, because at the end, I'll have several things at the end, like the street sweeper, the barricade cleanup crews, and so, yeah, we absolutely can do that.
Thank you.
All right. Ed, how about a motion then on item eight K one?
Move it.
So, a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then item eight K two? Need a motion? All right, and a second? All right, and a second? Cast your votes. Pass unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Item eight L is to receive the study on the Cord Ashore Plan and also response to the findings on the MAPS III Transit Modern Streetcar Subcommittee, and Mike Mize is here to lead us through that process.
Mr. Mayor, as we've gotten into the planning process on MAPS, some folks in the community and councilpeople actually said, how does the, things have changed since we originally adopted the Cord Ashore Plan, and now as we're going into MAPS III, how do those relate? And so with that, we've tasked the ADG to take a look at that and to look at the existing Cord Ashore Plan and how that now folds into MAPS III. Mike?
Thank you, Manager Couch. Mayor, council members, happy to be here. Just to set this up a little bit, a couple of things. The presentation that we're going to give is a summary of the actual report. The actual report, as I understand, was a part of your packet. It's much lengthier. This presentation's long enough, but the actual study's even longer. This was, as Manager Couch suggested, a study that was conducted for the purpose of trying to understand how specific MAPS III projects, specifically the Park Convention Center and Streetcar, might impact and have a change on the Cord Ashore Study that was done, I believe, in 2008. So with that in mind, that's the, what we, that was our goal, it was our charge, it was not to validate the three MAPS projects. The goal was to understand how they would affect Cord Ashore and whether or not Cord Ashore needed any major revisions. Just as a little bit of background, Cord Ashore was a plan that involved the creation of a world-class pedestrian-friendly boulevard, development of a 70-acre downtown park, development of business and retail in that Cord Ashore area, as well as mixed-use housing, development of a convention center and a convention center hotel, and probable relocation of existing businesses. One of the other things that needs to be remembered about the Cord Ashore Plan is that it was always envisioned as a 20- to 50-year plan, not a plan that would result in just remarkable or dramatic changes in the first five to 10 years, certainly changes, but this is a long-term plan that will be impacted by some of these MAPS III projects. Since the Cord Ashore Plan was developed, some significant changes have taken place in the downtown core in particular. Those changes you're all familiar with, the construction of the Devon Tower, Project 180, the renovation of the Myriad Gardens Park, MAPS III has been passed, and the relocation of I-40, the new boulevard, and the construction of the Skydance Bridge. So the purpose of the study, as I indicated before, was to put all of these in context and try to determine what kinds of impacts they would have on each other and whether or not any significant changes were required for the Cord Ashore Plan. We used two nationally-known consultants to participate with us in this process. They were the Jonathan Rose Companies and Hargraves and Associates. And, as I said, this was to ensure the MAPS III initiatives are considered within a larger understanding of the context of downtown and the Cord Ashore area. The following items were addressed: the impact of the location of the new convention center, requirements for the street level at the new convention center, the design of the new boulevard, which, as you know, is still ongoing, the impact of the downtown park on adjacent future development, the modern streetcar system as it relates to Cord Ashore, the impact of MAPS III projects on walkability and transportation access in general. The methodology. We reviewed all, as much of the information was available with respect to the MAPS III projects, with respect to Cord Ashore, met with stakeholders and interested parties, I believe there's a list of those attached to the report, and identified issues which we think need to be addressed or considered as part of the design of the MAPS III projects. The findings represent a summary and compilation of the comments that were made by those who were interviewed. The authors of this study believe that consideration of each of these items is necessary to the overall success of MAPS III projects, and we found no major flaws in the Cord Ashore Study. I'll start with the first of the three MAPS III projects that was considered, and that's the convention center. The convention center, because of its location, should be considered a mediator between the downtown core and the downtown park and also the Cord Ashore area. The stakeholders agreed that the development of the convention center should enhance connections north and south rather than block them or inhibit them. The street fronts on Reno and the new boulevard in particular should be articulated so that they invite interface not only with the convention center, but interface with both parks, the Myriad Gardens Park and the new downtown park. There needs to be a strong pedestrian connection between the parks and downtown and Cord Ashore. The new convention center has to have a strong pedestrian emphasis. Some expressed concern that the selected site might create a boundary as opposed to a way to actually provide communication and pedestrian access to, between the two parks. Some expressed concern that, expressed the fact that rather than hinder that pedestrian access, depending on how that convention center is designed, it may actually enhance that by creating, inviting spaces at street level that would encourage pedestrian access between the two. Some of the issues that we recommended for further study, they need to carefully consider the issues that were on the preceding page. A strong focus on north-south connectivity and pedestrian interface needs to be made. The current use of the Cox Convention Center is almost two-thirds local use. That needs to be considered in the design of the convention center. Both residential and hotel development should be considered as options adjacent to the new convention center. A part of the convention center might be considered for private-public partnership development. Programming that can spill into the Myriad Gardens and downtown park should be included in the mix of uses. Input on programming should be discussed with the MAPS III Convention Center Subcommittee. The new boulevard, while it's not actually a MAPS III project, is obviously, will have a significant impact on both the park, the convention center, and on the streetcar. So we considered the boulevard as well. Stakeholders are unified in the opinion that the boulevard needs to be pedestrian-friendly. The overall number of traffic lanes should not exceed four. It's my understanding that through dialogue with the city and with ODOT, the boulevard as it's currently planned has four traffic lanes and two parking lanes, so that objective appears to have been met. A median should be considered, which could be used to enhance pedestrian access and may actually provide a place for pedestrians to gather in between the traffic lanes. While it's, the street could curve southward at the site of the convention center, the right-of-way for the boulevard is some 270 feet, six lanes of traffic won't take that up, so there's a possibility that that could curve southward and would actually provide a little additional land for the convention center.
And ODOT is doing that.
Okay. I was not aware of that, thank you. While it's necessary for the new boulevard to be depressed at the railroad crossing, we need to make every effort to make sure that that intersection is pedestrian-friendly.
Mike, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
You're talking about pedestrian-friendly, and I think that's a key to making the boulevard successful. In your discussions with the city and ODOT, has there been any conversation about the width, width of the sidewalks that are going to be adjacent to the boulevard?
I haven't had those specific discussions. I assume that those discussions are taking place as part of the communication between the city and ODOT.
The design is underway right now from ODOT, and we're awaiting their latest design to be presented back to us.
But if it doesn't provide for wide sidewalks, I think we ought to send it back to ODOT because we're missing the purpose if we don't make the sidewalks wide enough for pedestrians to feel comfortable walking along a four-lane street that's moving traffic at 50, 50 miles an hour.
Well, the traffic won't be going more than.
Promise?
Yeah, I think, I think ODOT's, I think the expectation is that it'll be 25 miles per hour.
Yeah, so they'll drive 50, that's observation, your honor, I'm sorry.
Stay out of your way when I'm on the boulevard. All right, Mike, go ahead.
That's fine. One other thing to be considered is the possibility of the boulevard merging into the street grid west of Walker. Are there issues for further record? Yes, sir.
On that, I was, there's going to be four lanes of traffic and two lanes for parking, isn't there?
Correct.
So the cars will be buffered from the pedestrians by the parking lane.
Yes.
So that's already part of the Walker accessibility.
We need to make it attractive, not only for the pedestrians, but for the facilities, the retail, we hope to see develop along there, to open up their stores, put a couple sidewalks and tables on the sidewalk out in front of their restaurants to have people sitting outside.
Well, I just wanted to make that point again because in the original design, there was some talk that it would be a six-lane of traffic boulevard, and it's not a six-lane of traffic boulevard, it's four active traffic lanes and two parking lanes that are involved. So it's a different concept. I think a lot of people out there think it's just six lanes of traffic zipping along there. That was my point.
There'll also be room for an amenity zone like we put in Project 180 for landscaping, the further above are the pedestrian walkways from the traffic.
As long as you don't build a typical four-foot or five-foot sidewalk like Oklahoma City does, I'll be happy.
Mike?
The recommendation that we've made, and which is actually, as part of this discussion has pointed out, is that ODOT and the city continue their dialogue so that some of these objectives will be, so that these objectives will be considered and met within the context of the MAPS III projects. The next item was the downtown park. There's general consensus that the downtown park should serve as a catalyst for development, particularly east and west of the park. An aggressive strategy for development of those adjacent blocks will require significant participation both by the public and the private sector. As a large park, you may remember, it's 70 acres, 40 acres upper park, 30 acres for the lower park, that's the lower park being south of the new, the realigned I-40. It will have significantly different uses than the Myriad Gardens Park. That needs to be taken into consideration during the design of the master plan for the park. While Myriad Gardens provides programming for children and active adults, the downtown park could augment those uses and provide, serve programming for young adults and other children. The location of urban and active uses near the boulevard is important to draw people into the downtown park. Union Station is a key element of the park, its restoration and future uses need to be considered as well.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
I have, I've had a number of opportunities in recent months to talk to people, Hispanics that have, that were raised or grew up in the area that's south of the new interstate.
Yes, sir.
And the more I think about it, the less I like the idea of a bicentennial park approach, where you take every blade of grass out and build something new. There are a couple of features there, the Old Riverside School and Manuel Perez Park that are very, very important to the Hispanic community, I think, in terms of its historic attachment to Oklahoma City. I recently talked to Pat Fennell at the Latino Development Agency, and while they're looking for another place, one of the reasons they're looking for another place is because they don't think they're welcome where they are. And I think if we would try to save that school, it's an historic building, try to do something with that park, with the park that's there, the Manuel Perez Park, I think that would be a way to kind of bring in an element to this that we haven't discussed in the past.
It's interesting that you bring that up today. At the last park subcommittee meeting, there was a representative of the Capitol Hill and Latino area at the park subcommittee. And one thing you need to know, there has been discussion from the beginning at the park subcommittee, and this discussion has actually advanced and was a large topic of conversation at the last meeting, whereby considering the, exist, some of the existing, saving some of the existing structures, saving a lot of the, some of the existing uses for the lower park is something that the park subcommittee is very concerned about and wants to try to take advantage as much as they can of the existing uses and existing structures. There's also a study that I believe is undergoing, is ongoing right now by planning to actually review and analyze the existing structures down there to determine which ones may have historic significance so that they can be earmarked for saving or repurposing. But that was a significant topic of conversation at this last park subcommittee meeting.
Well, I, when I talked to the people there at the Latino Development Agency, it was clear to me that they felt like they needed to leave there. They've looked for other locations, they've shopped around two or three places, but they felt like they needed to leave because they felt like that was the plan, that they were going to leave there. And when I, every time I go by that school, I think if we could, if we could change the, once we clear all that out, if we could change the way the front of the, the street is now, is very close to the front of that Riverside School, and they've had to redirect the entrance to the north side, but if there, more space could be provided on the front, similar to what the idea is to do at Union, at the Santa Fe Station, by redirecting the street a little bit and putting that property onto the land where the Development Agency is, where the school is, I think they'd be very comfortable in staying there. And there's other kinds of assistance, I think, that we could be utilized to help make sure that building stays in place. It is really kind of a shame that we haven't done more with that park that's down there considering who it honors and what, and how that, how it all rose. I just want to be sure that's included in what, in the conversation. I'm glad to hear the parks people are talking about it.
The park subcommittee is very aware of those kinds of concerns, and we are actually in the process right now of selecting a consultant, an architect slash engineer, if you will, to develop a master plan for the park that would include that lower park area. But as I said, the subcommittee has made it known that that is a big concern of theirs as well.
Well, the church is going to stay there, which is still a center for the Hispanic community, and it seems to me if you could keep those, I'm being redundant if you're going to do it, I need to shut up.
Just for a point of clarification, in the park take area is not, it is not planned for the Perez Park or for the Riverside School. Those are clearly outside of our take area, but I've heard the same type of comments from the council.
And I know, I know they're interested, the people at Latino Development Agency are having a problem trying to find a place to locate. They've looked a number of different places. And if they thought they had the support of the city and this, and this plan to stay there, I suspect they might stay there. I was in a meeting recently at, where a number of people were there, and this topic was brought up about, oh, maybe six weeks ago, and people literally were brought to tears thinking about not, thinking about the fact that Riverside School might eventually be torn down and not be the integral part of that Hispanic culture that they had grown up with. I mean, literally, there were people there that were, that were that emotional. I mean, literally, there were people there that were, that were that emotional about it, and also about the park, they feel like that part of it.
You've got to remember that that quarter shore diagram was not a plan, it was a suggestion. And, and a lot of the things that were shown on there were just that, it was an architect's idea what it might be. And it's not limited to what's shown on that plan, and I think that's caused some confusion. People have given too much weight to what that plan shows, and it was more of a suggestion than it was a plan document. I think that's important, we keep that in mind if we go forward.
Well, that's one of the reasons I'm saying something about it today, is let people know that that's not, that's not a blueprint, it's a watercolor, and we can, we've got, we have an opportunity to change those things, and I believe there are people interested in both the projects I talked about.
Well, and really, that goes back to the purpose of this study, was to find ways to interface quarter shore with the MAPS III projects, and this park subcommittee is very concerned about what goes on adjacent to the park and making sure that that's viable as well.
There, I have one other thing, are we going to actually see a trail built that is a trail all the way to the river? Are we going to, we're not, I've been assured that we are, but I'd like to hear somebody else.
Mr. Teller, Mr. Winger can address that better than I.
Thank you, Councilman. I think what you see today, as you, as you look at the Skydance Bridge and the connections, is a sidewalk that's been constructed, an 88 accessible sidewalk that extends down to the north side of the bridge. There's actually a sidewalk that'll continue down Harvey to the river, right by the park, that's under construction and should be finished shortly. But ultimately, as part of the park design, you will see probably a trail that'll actually connect that bridge, not next to the street, but through the park itself. I think that's a concept generally.
I'd just like to make it, like to make it very accessible. I mean, the whole idea of having that bridge there, if it's not very invitingly accessible, seems to me, there's no, there's no point in postponing that aspect of the value of that bridge for 10 years. We, that's something we could fix with, with a little asphalt, it seems to me.
The interviews for the park were just held yesterday, and we're expecting that that master plan to be developed very shortly. Obviously, there's some early goals to have that opened in 2014 or portions thereof to align it with the new Boulevard, but we want to give some, some architectural liberties to that consultant that's engaged to help us route that and make sure that it's compatible with the other park uses. All right.
Your honor, if I may make a comment, you know, Pete, on Riverside, just an opportunity, perhaps, to encourage people to come to that park, because especially the southern part, it's going to be challenged to get people comfortable to come down there. We could consider possibly turning that into like an Oklahoma City museum, to where there'd be people coming in and out all the time, just to encourage usage of the southern portion of the park. I'm concerned if it was just the Latino Agency itself, that might kind of be limited in use, but something to encourage people to use the park. And I would also suggest, because from my perspective, we had a problem with this at the Civic Center Park, if you put too many trees too closely along the side, it's actually non-inviting for people to come in, I mean, they're just concerned about what's inside that park. I think trees are important, but let's provide enough spacing. And then I think we've got to do something to encourage development along Robinson Avenue, you know, the old hubcap alley area, to get people to come back down in that area who did not grow up there like Pete and I did, I mean, we're fine going over there, but outside of our little group, I think we really have to work to get people comfortable with that area again, and I think the best way is to encourage some type of commercial development along Robinson to replace those current businesses. But anything we can do to have people coming in and out, whether it's a museum or some other type of, of facility in the southern portion of the park, I think it's going to be critical to get people comfortable with using the park on a regular basis at all hours, and a museum tends to provide that, I think, or, I mean, it could be, so, just those thoughts.
Okay. Mike, do you want to go ahead?
Street parking on Robinson and Hudson can, can serve early on as parking and as a buffer to the actual park. We need to make, we need to develop a comprehensive maintenance plan. There are some concerns about security that need to be considered as part of the design and the master plan. There is some support for the fact that if we build the park, it will result in development, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Parking right now is a perception problem more than it is a, an actual problem, and the general consensus of the stakeholders is that the substation can stay where it is now. Input on programming needs to be discussed with the MAPS III Downtown Park Subcommittee, and a plan for implementing strategies to develop the adjacent block should also be drafted or considered, and just as a, as a side point, the Alliance for Economic Development is currently looking for a consultant that would help do exactly that. The modern streetcar, there was concern among the stakeholder, most of the, many of the stakeholders with the, the streetcar. The questions that you see in front of you are questions that were posed by the people who were interviewed. There was concern about the demand, the market, the ridership profile, and some other concerns. There's, there was also concern about clutter being created by an overhead wire system. Recommendations, the transit system needs to be sized properly, a consultant should be hired to study the current route and to assist in the actual design of the, the streetcar. That, interviews for that consultant actually are going to take place at the, in the middle of this month, so that process is underway, and options for powering the streetcar with that wire should also be investigated. And I will point out that the next item on the agenda is a response from the Streetcar Subcommittee regarding this study. All, three of the subcommittees were given an opportunity to provide a response, the Streetcar Subcommittee was the only one that did so formally. Additional overall observations, one of the significant observations was that the quarter shore plan itself did not look at what we refer to as linkages or its interaction with Bricktown, Midtown, Downtown Core. It was a fairly self-contained study that needs to be reviewed, and, and the Alliance for Economic Development is in the process, as I said, of trying to make that happen. We need to build on the successes that we have with the Myriad Gardens, we need to carefully consider the Cox Convention Center site and how it relates to everything. The redevelopment of the Sheraton Century Center block is something that needs to be considered. The Boulevard could be considered as a way to bring people into the Downtown Core and into the neighborhoods in the Near West Side. As currently designed, and this, you have to remember, we did this study and completed this study in December, we didn't have the benefit of the current Boulevard design, but it needs to, to do everything that it can to support mixed-use development and creation of neighborhoods. Broadway and Robinson both right now serve as, in some ways, Boulevards that provide for commercial development, and with the redevelopment of the Cox Convention Center, they can be considered even further for that purpose. In order to best leverage the public infrastructure investments in downtown Oklahoma City, we recommend that the city look at land use controls, developer incentives, and other ways to try and develop the areas, Councilman Greenwell, specifically adjacent to the park and, and adjacent to the Convention Center as well. Those things should be considered. Public-private partnerships need to be considered, particularly on city-owned parcels as well. Pedestrian access and pedestrian connectivity from the Downtown Core all the way to the river is something that was a key element of the conversations that we had, and that also needs to be considered in the context of Midtown, Downtown, Bricktown, and Quarter And, and once again, the, the development and linkages are a key element for us in terms of recommending that the quarter shore and the MAPS projects be considered in the entire fabric of downtown rather than just independently. Final conclusions, the quarter shore plan as it sits does provide a great framework for growth for downtown. This is an opportunity to study it in context with other areas of downtown, and most critical is that there is as much overlap and coordination as possible in the planning of each of the MAPS III projects. And, and as, in closing, I want to point out that I think we're well on our way to that, the, we, we're in the process, as I said, of hiring someone to do a master plan for the park. There is a consultant being processed right now underway for the streetcar, and a consultant for the Convention Center, I think, will be solicited sometime in the next few months, so that there will be an opportunity for those subcommittees and for those consultants to work together. So we think that that part of the process is well on its way. And with that, I'll ask if there's any questions or comments, Councilman Shadid.
Let me, well, let me ask number one, what was the cost of this study?
Twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. Let me, because you, you've gotten a lot of pushback on, on this study, I've listened to the Transit Subcommittee meetings, I think you had the vote at the MAPS Advisory Council was five to three to even accept this.
That's correct.
So you had three people who rejected receiving it. I, I have concerns about the methodology of the study. I have concerns about really even calling it a study. We have, and I know you've heard these, these concerns, but just to give voice to them, there, there are ways that you can take verbal statements, and you can make data points out of them, and you can, and you can try and come to some conclusions, but you have to ask the same question to all the interviewees, which I took from your responses that I heard that that wasn't done. And then you have to try and quantify, what is a general consensus? Throughout the report, we hear there's a general consensus about this, there's a general concern about this, is it, is it 15 out of 18 people, is it nine, 12 out of 18 people, and try and, and let us know, you know, how much of a consensus there is. To me, it's a survey or a report of findings, not, it doesn't rise to the level of a study. So we spent 20,000 dollars and we interviewed 18 people over approximately 36 hours. Many of the people, we, we already know their opinions, the mayor, Meg Salyer, Gary Mars, Russell Klaus, I mean, we, we already know those, those four, certainly. You've got 18 people, 15 male Caucasians, three female Caucasians, nobody that I can see that lives or represents the south side of the city. You have three people from the Convention Center Subcommittee, four from the Park Subcommittee, none from the Transit Subcommittee, none from the Parks Department. I mean, it would seem to, just ask the Parks Department what, I mean, since we're talking about a 70-acre park in the core of the quarter shore plan, what does the Parks Department think about this? It is a quarter shore plan, and so I, I don't understand that the marginalization of planners, not, not to degrade the qualifications of the people who are on here, I mean, you have a lot of business leaders, but, but no one really with planning and training and education, or education and training in planning. So if we're talking about the interaction of these different projects, transit, Convention Center, the river, on the quarter shore plan, then it seems like we would interview planners, but we have two out of the 18 people have any, have any background training in planning. I, I'd like to know about the, the experience in other cities. We have, in many ways, a replication of what's happening in Discovery Green in Houston. You have CBD, a business district, and then you have Myriad Gardens, which is like the Discovery Green in Houston, a very active park, and then you have the Convention Center, and hopefully our Convention Center won't look as god awful as the one in Houston. But the question would be, what's happening on the other side of the Convention Center in Houston? I mean, what, what, one of the, you gave some voice to it, but one of the largest revolutions or apprehensions of so many people is that you're putting a Convention Center in between two parks, and what, and you referenced, I mean, this is a problem, you're trying to figure out how do we maintain pedestrian access and all, I mean, this is a real problem, is are you going to suffocate the Downtown Park? How are you going to develop a symbiotic relationship between the two with a large Convention Center in between the two? Those are, those are major issues, and I think, if it's, we're going to call it a study, if we're going to look at, I mean, let's look at the experience in other studies, Houston has some, some real commonalities. And so, more than just in 36 hours, spending 20,000 dollars to interview 18 people, most of whom we all know their opinions already. I mean, let's, let's, let's look at other cities, let's look at the experience in other cities and try and draw from that. I, I think that what you heard a lot of from Transit, the resistance that you heard from Transit, is that there's a concern that, that this is the groundwork for some kind of future pivot in policy and in allocation of funds. Right, you, that, that this is laying the groundwork for reallocating funds away from certain projects that might not have the, the backing of the bulk of the interviewees towards maybe the Convention Center, for example. You, you go out of your way to say that there's general concern that the current budget for the Convention Center will not be sufficient to accommodate both space and design concerns. Then you say, there's general concern among the stakeholders interviewed that the transit component of the MAPS III program has not been studied or planned thoroughly enough to justify the $130 million expense, that the transit system needs to be sized properly for Oklahoma City. This, that, to go out of your way to point out that the price tag of Transit is $130 million when you didn't do that for anything else, seems, seems, I, I understand how it would seem suspect to some people. And when there's a controversy about that sentence not being there, the, enough to justify the $130 million expense, it wasn't there, and then it gets added in by someone, and we're not sure exactly how it got added in or it wasn't there, but somebody went out of their way to add the words enough to justify the $130 million expense. So, it, it feel, I, I'm not sure what, what the purpose of the study is. And, and one thing, I understand the concern and some of the pushback you've gotten, that this may be laying the groundwork as a pivot in, in reallocation in the future on policy. Because I think you, I think to accomplish the things you're talking about on the Convention Center, I think you are going to have budget shortfalls, you are going to have problems. You, you went out of your way to discuss that we haven't talked about maintenance costs for the streetcar and the park, but not the other things, but not the Convention Center or other MAPS projects. I want to make sure that when you talk about that we want to minimize depression of the Boulevard, right, near the Santa Fe, near the intermodal hub, that we're remembering or taking into consideration the findings of the intermodal hub study, that we may need to expand the wall for a third rail, and what they want is depression of the Boulevard, and that I'm not sure if the interviewees are aware of that potential conflict or if that's being considered. But I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, Mike, you want to?
Can I respond to that just a second, ma'am?
Sure.
I just, I sit in on every subcommittee meeting for the last year, and attended, and of course, the Advisory Board itself for the past year, and I've talked to many people on all the different committees in an informal setting for the past year, and I never once heard anybody talk about reallocating money from one project to another, regardless of the project. Never once heard anybody say that we were going to do all the projects, and I never once heard anybody say they wanted to short one to fund another. So I, I think to lay that out as... So I think to lay that out as some unspoken motive of the study may be a little harsh. They were asked to look at the quarter shore plan and its relevance to the, now, based on the MAPS three projects that were going on. It wasn't a study of transit. The comment about lowering the road and all that came up as a way to make traffic or pedestrian or anything else that might work. It wasn't a, it wasn't a, you need to do this, absolutely. They weren't studying transit and they weren't studying the convention center. Those comments just come up. So I don't want to, I don't want to say that you shouldn't have the concerns you had. I just think that some of those, I just didn't hear any of that going on. I think that there was a lot of paranoia that jumped up that they might have been, but I never heard it once during any of the year that I was on there.
And let me just clarify, I'm not saying that anybody has ever said, we need to reallocate funds. And I'm not saying that this study says we need to reallocate funds. What I'm saying is that some of the reason for the pushback and the concern about the study is a perception that this may be laying the groundwork as a pivot in policy in the future, things that have not been said yet, but might be said in the future if you have budget shortfalls. And what is going to maybe increase the paranoia or the concern is that if you don't include interviewees from the transit subcommittee, for example, if you don't, if you have people that you interview that have knowledge about transit and you don't ask them anything about transit, which apparently happened. I mean, this is a study trying to look at the different MAPS three projects and its interaction with the quarter shore plan. You brought people in and interviewed them and didn't ask them about transit, which is a major MAPS three project that impacts the quarter shore plan. We're going, you, in a couple of ways. You say that, that there were, the quarter shore plan didn't explore enough the connections, you know, to automobile alley and midtown and all these different, different areas. Well, that, the streetcar is how you connect those, those areas. I mean, that is the vehicle to address that shortfall of the quarter shore plan. But if you're not asking the people that you're interviewing as part of the study about transit, it's going to increase some of the concerns and if you want to call it paranoia or just, or just, just concern.
If I might, just two things. We did ask people about transit. We asked them for their views on transit, and some of them chose not to respond about transit. I will say that. And you said that you were, that you're, you didn't understand the purpose. The purpose of the study, and I think is, the concerns that you've raised are issues that we believe need to be considered, discussed going forward in the future. There was no ulterior motive. The idea was to find out what kinds of issues are out there, what perceptions are out there, and to try to find ways to deal with them in the future, which is, which is what we think we accomplished in the study.
I just, I already know, I mean, I know where Rick Kane and Blair Humphreys and Russell Klaus and Kathy O'Connor and the mayor and Meg and Gary, I already know the opinions of, I mean, if that's all this is, is just the 36 hours of interviewing people that we already know their opinions, what do we get for that $20,000?
We, we really believe the study stands on its own merits.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mike? Yeah, David?
Mike, or really perhaps Jim, I think it might be helpful, at least from my perspective, if we could take a tour of the area where the park will be and just drive around that area, if that's possible.
Well, we'd be happy to. I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah. And also, maybe if Russell, he's not in right now, could join us, we could take a side trip over to Capitol Hill and talk about the opportunities there for future development. And maybe, now I'm being serious about this, is maybe we could invite a couple of people from the private sector to show the ability to be successful from a restaurant perspective about the potential to, you know, consider, especially if we, for example, kept something like the Riverside School open, putting in a restaurant there or going across the river into the Capitol Hill area. I think that maybe 30, 45 minute tour would be very helpful, at least from my perspective, and if it's appropriate to bring in outside or private individuals to that tour.
David, have I told you how much I appreciate you? Have I said that publicly?
No, but I'll accept.
I need to. I appreciate that very much. Are we going to hear from the, I see a number of people from the transit committee back here. Are we going to hear from them with regard to the response that, I'm asking, are they going to, are they here to speak about it?
Okay. Mike, looks like we're through with questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff, you want to speak on item 8L2, the response to findings from the MAPS3 Transit Model Streetcar Subcommittee on the quarter shore plan?
Mr. White, thank you for calling me up. My name's Jeff Bezdek. I serve on the MAPS3 Transit Subcommittee and our former Alternatives Analysis Committee. We just came, literally, if you needed us to be here to answer questions about it. We tried to take a very professional approach to the questions that were raised in the quarter shore study. The majority of the committee unanimously forwarded those questions and we tried to provide them as, as answers. It was the opinion of the subcommittee that this was a survey, not necessarily a study. And we were quite concerned that after many years of discussion and study by Jacobs Engineering and our planners, that many of those questions had been adequately answered. Now granted, the route that has not made it before council yet, but was approved by the Oversight Board last week, does need to be threaded, vetted by a professional. And we're in the process of procuring that professional to vet the route, verify it, run more analysis on it. And of course, I'm sure that you've heard the issues regarding the Alternatives Analysis and federal funding. But the reality is, as far as the study is concerned, those questions, we feel, have been very adequately answered, and we tried to collate that information and spend a great deal of time doing so. And we're a little bit frustrated that ADG did not include those readily available answers to those questions in their study. Apparently, a modest attempt was made to contact our chairman, to have him as part of the discussion, part of the study. No other attempt was made. He could not, he was not available. And Nathaniel is actually here today, if you need to speak with him. But no additional attempt was made to contact our vice chairman, Zane Boatwright, or anyone else on the subcommittee. So granted, in subcommittee meetings, many of you attend them, we're very passionate as volunteers. We're grateful for being appointed. We're grateful. We really enjoy serving you. And we can get quite passionate in those meetings. But when we make it through the Oversight Board and the council, we want the results of our committee meetings to be as professional as possible, and hopefully the response to findings, you'll find adequate and without bias.
Jeff, thanks. Any questions for Jeff? Jeff, thanks for coming down. We appreciate your subcommittee's work. How about a motion then to receive item 8L1?
Would be item 2.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, seven to one. And how about a motion to accept item 8L2?
Would be item 2.
Cast your votes and it passes unanimously. Item 8M, I understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 8N, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right. How about moving that into executive session?
Move it to executive session.
Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item 8O has already been dealt with.
There was maybe some discussion to go back in without, and have further discussion, but in the interest of time, would the council like to do that this week? Because there's probably nothing really pressing on that. Or is that something we can maybe do at a subsequent week? I want to give you the option of going back in if you want to have further discussion for this morning. But we don't have to do that today if she does not do.
Item, uh, item 8O.
The water lawsuit. Why don't we, why don't we put that off then? We'll come back at a future time, have more discussions on that item.
Maybe we'll have an update from the media, if progress or lack thereof, before our next.
Okay.
Item 8P is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8P? All right, how about a motion then? Cast your votes on 8P. Passed unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item 9?
Would be item 7.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 10, these are items from council. Item 10A has already been deferred until May 15th. Gary, you have anything else? Ed? Okay. Larry? Pete?
Yes.
I have a.
Something.
Kathy Williams?
I don't see her.
Last week at the annual beans and cornbread luncheon of the Oklahoma City Metro Alliance First Step, they awarded the city of Oklahoma City the award for the outstanding community partner for the year 2012. And spent quite a bit of time talking about the value of that partnership to that organization and to, they operate the public and Ebert alternative in addition to a men's and, a men's and also a women's recovery facility and provide services to a number of the city departments. And I just want to show everybody the trophy and we'll put it in an appropriate place and let everybody know that the city's relationship to Oklahoma City Metro Alliance is certainly appreciated.
Very nice. David?
Yes, your honor, thank you. I'm sure Pete would want to speak about the activities Friday afternoon on the dedication of the new Oklahoma City Community College Facility in Capitol Hill area. That was a great event. Pete did a great job representing the city and speaking about the potential that is there. And it's always great to see Oklahoma City Community College continue to reach out and expand its services throughout the city. Couple other items, and this is not meant to sound negative, and that's not my intent. I spoke with a realtor from the Dallas area last week, and he was talking about, you know, how impressed he is with the Oklahoma City area. And I was feeling very good about that. And then he came to kind of the conclusion of his presentation. He goes, yeah, this is becoming a great area for call centers. And the reason is, you know, compared to other large communities, the cost of land and building is, is not as expensive, and it's really a great value. And call centers are good, don't get me wrong, but, there's a but to that. You know, what I'd like to see is we continue to develop opportunities for a higher level of professionalism. And I was speaking with Dr. Seacrest from Oklahoma City Community College, and he was sharing a statistics that I think 60-plus percent of the college graduates are now staying in Oklahoma. Those are graduates with either an associate or a bachelor's degree, which is also a positive thing. But last week, I spoke to a group, it was a graduate class down at the University of Oklahoma. Many of these students were graduating. They were either masters of accounting students or MBA students. And unfortunately, the vast majority of those students were heading down to Texas to start their careers. And the point is, I think we've made a lot of improvements over the last 20 years, but there's still a higher level that we can achieve more from a financial center that you find in the North Texas area, Houston, Kansas City, St. Louis, even Memphis, Denver. And I just don't want us to ever get to the point where we become complacent or sitting back and think, oh, we've accomplished a lot, because we're still seeing a lot of our graduates who are putting forth the additional effort to get a graduate degree, especially in the area of finance, heading off into other communities to begin their profession. One, because there's so many more opportunities. And two, the long-term prospects are much greater in other areas. And I'd like to see that that trend be changed. So in 10 or more years, we'll see that, you know, 60 to 70 percent of our graduate-level college graduates are staying here in Oklahoma City, in the Oklahoma area, like we're seeing now with the lower degrees at the associate and bachelor degree. So I'm not, I didn't mean for that to sound negative. I just think we've got some additional opportunities to improve upon, to make this even a stronger financial area and further diversify our business community here in the Oklahoma City area. Thank you.
Skip?
I would like to acknowledge the Persimmon Hills Neighborhood Association for a very challenging project that they're having to, that they've been addressing. You know, we, we had two cell tower issues that had been brought before the city council, and the first one was in council on Shadid's Ward. The applicant for the, the other cell tower was, actually had identified Persimmon Hills area, Cole's Gardens. And as a result of the, the process, it's been put off, I think, probably three, three times. And sometimes it takes a lot of, a lot of the wind and a lot of the sail out of a neighborhood association when they have, have really got up to, to prepare, and they've come to the city council on several occasions and, or received calls just to be advised that the matter has been continued. But in spite of that, they continue to be mindful of their concerns. They continue to be mindful of their neighborhood association. They invited me to their board meeting a week ago, and they are still very engaged as citizens and willing to, to discuss and, and work with this process. And I would just like to commend them for having the strength and the fortitude to continue their stand and their position as it relates to the historical status and the preservation of their neighborhood association and their neighborhood as far as the geographics of the area. The other one I would like to thank, the county commissioners of the, of Oklahoma County, and in particular, Ms. Willa Johnson. There was an item that was on our, our agenda today, item 6Q, which is a four mile street improvement from Wilshire Boulevard and from Douglas Boulevard to Post Road, Britton Road from Coal Train to Sooner Road, in which the city and the Oklahoma County have entered into an agreement in which this will make a major improvement of four miles of Sooner Road. And so I would just like to thank these type of partnerships and thank the former city councilwoman, Willa Johnson, in her present status as the county commissioner that also continues to represent part of Ward 7. And one last note, there's been a lot of questions that I've received in reference to a mile of tree removal on Air Depot between Hefner and Britton Road. And in some areas, you would think that we're just eliminating everything that grows in the area for either some type of development. And I finally got the right answer, well, finally got the answer. And for all the citizens who have asked in questions about the traffic issues and about the tree removal, and I'm talking about some very, very old trees, it is O, G, and E who are preparing to install new lines. And so that's the reason why the E's mid has been basically wiped out from as far as all the trees on the area.
I've got a couple more things.
And one last note, and I would just like to thank, say that we received this morning the unfortunate passing of one of the greatest judges that this city and this state will have known, Judge Bill Manger. And so me personally, the number of times that I've had to peer before And so, uh, me personally, the number of times that I've had to appear before his court and the citizens that I know that has appeared before his court, you could not ever find a more fine jurist than Judge Bill Manger.
Councilman Ryan?
Thank you. David, uh, I think you raised some really great questions about, uh, jobs in Oklahoma City. I, I would suggest that you might want to look at the strategic implementation plan of the Economic Development Trust. We addressed some of the very issues you're talking about. And if there are suggestions to improve that, I would appreciate you, you know, giving them to us. Uh, we've, um, the citizens voted seventy-five million dollars in gold bonds for development of economic development projects in Oklahoma City. And I think our strategic implementation plan addresses those concerns. Uh, it may not go far enough and that's, I would appreciate your input there because I think you raised some great questions about the quality of the jobs we're offering. And the, the quality is one of the, uh, main focuses of that strategic implementation plan. The second thing is, uh, in a discussion with city manager a couple weeks ago, I made an inquiry about, uh, the number of city vehicles that operate on compressed natural gas. And I got a response, um, from Jennifer, uh, which was very encouraging. Right now we've got eighty-seven vehicles that operate on CNG. And I'm not sure what percentage that is of the total vehicles the company, I mean, city has, but, uh, we've got eleven more under order. And then the, um, the Utilities Division Solid Waste are looking at ten additional vehicles. If we add those eleven in plus those ten, we're well over a hundred vehicles that'll be operating with CNG in Oklahoma City. And I think that's a, a real tribute to the, the vision of our city managers, uh, throughout the company, out the city, excuse me, to acquire those CNG vehicles because they have an operating benefit in terms of cost, in terms of air quality, in terms of maintenance. I think we ought to pursue that. I want to thank the city manager for his leadership. That's all, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ryan. Uh, Councilman White, you'd like to say something?
Yeah, I, I, I should have mentioned, uh, the loss of Judge Manger. He, uh, uh, passed away sometime last night, uh, very unexpectedly. And, um, it's, it is a great loss to us as, as, um, he's been the, the chief judge of the municipal court for some time and probably the, um, probably the best era that the court has seen was under his leadership. It's been, he's been a, he was a very, um, he's a good friend in addition to being a, a fine jurist and, and he did a great job of running that system over there and he's going to be sorely missed. Also, I, I was remiss not to comment, um, a little bit more about the, the Transit Subcommittee. They had, they had people here today to speak, uh, probably more than any other committee, I think, um, at least as much, as much as any other committee. They've been involved, um, trying to push forward the agenda and trying to look at things the way they should be looked at. And, uh, as everyone that watches this and is listening to me, we've not always been in agreement, but certainly I'm not, uh, I'm not, I've not had any complaints about their commitment to the cause. And, um, to some extent I share, uh, what, uh, Councilman Shadid said about, I think, what just a, almost a disrespect was shown to them in the way that report was, was handled. And I, and I, uh, I was, I was remiss not to mention that at the time.
Thank you, Councilman White. Award-three city councilman neglected to make a couple of comments, so he's asked the, uh, vice mayor to make them form, so if you'd indulge me for just a minute. Last Friday afternoon, the State Lions dedicated a new lion statue on Northwest 10th Street at their state offices. They'd had their, uh, state convention in Oklahoma City at the Marriott Hotel on Northwest Expressway. Lions came in from all over the state. And that new lion, uh, is a significant, uh, addition to Northwest 10th Street because along with the friends of Northwest 10th Street with OSU OKC who donated the artwork on that, a particular facility, uh, it represents hope that, uh, we are in the process of improving Northwest 10th Street. And, uh, that was an exciting event, small event, but still very exciting. So, thank you for letting me, uh, interject that. With that, we'll move on to the next part of our agenda. Our mayor, unfortunately, uh, had another obligation to meet some folks. Uh, next up is the presentation of the Sister Cities International Annual Report. Have we found somebody to do that, sir?
I, I believe Kathy Williams was, I know Kathy Williams was here earlier this morning and I think she had to leave, so I, I think we'll put that off at this point in time and, and move to the, uh, the proposed budget presentation.
All right, then, will the gentleman for the proposed budget come forward, Mr. Dower?
Uh, we've placed in your, uh, in front of you there, uh, the budget books there in the three-ring binder, uh, got our presentation there. I'll try to shorten up things a little bit with the late hour here to try to, uh, hit things, uh, quickly as we move through here. I'm pleased to be before you here to present the FY13 proposed budget and, um, let's see if this, maybe if you can flip the slides there. Yeah, I guess we're not, this isn't working. So, uh, just to look at the big numbers first, uh, for our budget, uh, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-point-three million dollars is the total for the general fund, two-hundred-and-six-point-eight million dollars for the other operating funds within the city, and three-hundred-and-fifty-seven-point-eight million dollars for our non-operating funds. Those are most of our capital funds like MAPS-III and the Capital Improvements Fund. So our grand total then is nine-hundred-and-fifty-one-point-nine million dollars. So let's take a look at how we got here. The city's annual budget is one of the key pieces in our strategic planning process. As you can see in this diagram, we use the citizen survey to inform development of the council priorities, which in turn give direction to departments as they develop their strategic business plans. And finally, those plans guide departments as they propose changes to their budgets and as well be in the city manager's office, review those proposals and put together the proposed budget you have before you. Of course, as we go through each year, we're collecting data, reporting results, evaluating our progress and making decisions about what we need to do going forward. Budget process gives city leaders, both management and council, an opportunity to see what we've accomplished, what we want to get done and evaluate the resources we're using to achieve our priorities and goals. Uh, with that in mind, I might run through our, our city council priorities and review some of the things we've done this past year and some of the things we're looking forward to in the coming year. Citizen confidence has been, uh, an emphasis of the city since council first started formally adopting priorities a number of years ago. One of the keys to, to maintaining that trust is stay in touch with our citizens. We receive feedback through the, from them in a number of different ways. Our citizen survey is a key tool in that effort and, uh, we're in, working on our survey now. Our contractor, ETC, will be conducting the survey later this summer. We'll be reporting the results in July and August. We have a number of other methods to receive citizen feedback such as citizen involvement in Plan OKC, MAPS-III and focus groups. Our performance reporting is another tool for, uh, maintaining, uh, confidence of our citizens so they know what services, uh, we're providing and how we're doing, uh, what results we're achieving with those services. And delivering what we promise has been a goal of the city, city management, uh, through the years for many years, or for many years now. And, uh, in FY13, we plan to continue, uh, our progress on the O-7 bond authorization. We'll complete the improvements at the Chesapeake Energy Arena. Uh, we'll begin the final pieces of the MAPS-for-Kids program and begin implementing the first pieces of the MAPS-III program. As we look at creating a sustainable financial model, uh, the city's triple-A bond rating was once again confirmed this year by both Standard and Poor's and Moody's. Uh, and a factor that they consider there very important is our strong financial management that the city takes. And a key piece of that is the financial policies that were adopted last year by the council and which established the framework we use in managing the city's resources. The proposed budget does add a position in the Finance Department to work on debt management and performance management issues. Both of these areas have seen a tremendous increase in activity in recent years and this position will, uh, supplement our existing staff and provide us with the knowledge and energy we need to maintain and strengthen our activities in these area, these areas. Diversified revenue base is a key, uh, piece of that sustainable financial model. Uh, in recent years, the biggest piece of that has been our, uh, ambulance service funding, uh, through the utility bill model and that, uh, program will be continuing in the coming year. The Finance Department will also be initiating a program to enhance revenue collections and improve collection of delinquent taxes. Finally, uh, in terms of our sustainable financial model, the Planning Department will continue their work on the, uh, comprehensive plan update next year with the expectation to finish that in calendar year thirteen. The new comprehensive plan should provide a framework to help inform city leaders about the costs and benefits of development so that financial sustainability can be something that is considered during the development review process. Looking at the area of infrastructure development, uh, the GeoBond program and Project Eight One Eighty will continue next year, uh, with an expectation of about fifty-one-point-nine million dollars in projects to be awarded by Public Works. In addition, Public Works will be adding a number of positions in the Street Maintenance Division, uh, including an asphalt patching crew for potholes, a base repair crew and a strapping crew to maintain pavement markings throughout the city. In addition, a survey aide and a sidewalk repair crew will be added. And a sidewalk repair is a new function that the city will be taking on with the addition of, uh, new sidewalks around the city. The need to maintain those is also now growing, so we're adding a crew to maintain those. Utilities will be adding line maintenance and meter installation crews and airports is adding an engineer four and several other positions to help maintain their facilities. In the area of public transportation, uh, the public transportation parking, uh, department will be enhancing service in several ways. We're going to be adding a new express route from the northwest area of North Oklahoma City to downtown, the Capitol area and the medical district with two rush-hour trips in the morning and two in the evening. Four routes that have had extremely long wait times between service during midday hours, we'll see those wait times cut in half. Routes three, ten, thirteen and twenty-two, we'll see improved service next year. And customer service is also being enhanced with the addition of two positions in COPPA and two positions in the City Transit Fund, uh, to improve service in a number of areas. And next year, of course, we'll see continued progress on the MAPS-III modern streetcar project as they continue to refine the scope of that project. In the area of economic development, the Strategic Investment Program that Councilman Ryan referred to earlier has a target of creating fifteen-hundred jobs in Oklahoma City next year. In addition, the budget contains funding for the various TIF districts, council, our city, uh, economic development staff, contracts with the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce and the Alliance for Economic Development. Uh, so we've certainly had some economic, uh, development successes this past year with the relocation of Continental Resources and Boeing, uh, the expansion of Air Inc. at Will Rogers and the opening of the outlet shops of Oklahoma City. And there are a number of other, uh, opportunities in the works with, uh, including companies of Cambrian International, UE Manufacturing and Syntec Limited. Taking a look at, uh, enhancing the quality of life, uh, obviously the MAPS-III implementation will be continuing and those, uh, items are geared towards, uh, quality of life issues. The grand opening of the Myriad Gardens this last fall was exciting and, uh, the new park is an exceptional attraction in downtown. The FY13 budget will contain an Arts and Cultural Affairs Program Officer to facilitate and promote arts in Oklahoma City. The new position will not only support the Arts Commission and manage the one percent for arts program, but will work with local arts and cultural groups to help coordinate efforts and streamline coordination of city services for arts events. Appearance of the City is also a key contributor and, and to, especially in our neighborhoods, uh, to the quality of life we enjoy here. And our new, um, budget, uh, the budget for FY13 will include six additional code enforcement positions to better enforce city ordinances and help support our neighborhoods. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Department is also instituting a new program to help pay for irrigation costs, uh, for planting beds on city streets that neighborhoods are willing to maintain that should also help with the appearance of our city. And also this year, we'll be completing the improvements at the Chesapeake Energy Arena as part of the sports facilities, uh, sales tax that was enacted a few years ago. You know, this past weekend was quite a testimony to the, how the enhancements to the quality of life of, uh, who'd have thought ten or fifteen years ago we'd have so many things going on in one weekend and be able to have folks, uh, filling, filling the arena, filling the civic center, uh, Myriad Gardens. It's, it's an exciting time in Oklahoma City. Uh, the next area of council priority is improving public education. The MAPS-for-Kids progress, uh, program will continue in FY13 with the scheduled completion right now for FY14. Uh, one program that was grant-funded in prior years was the Funding of a Truancy Officer in FY13, helping trying to keep kids in school. Uh, that program's been successful and that program is being picked up and will be funded in the general fund next year. Uh, just also wanted to mention this last year, the Joint Task Force on Education was formed with city council members and representatives of Oklahoma City Public Schools and, uh, already have a couple of initiatives underway. The Reading Buddies Program at Heronville Elementary School has city management and city council, uh, members who are volunteering to help with reading. And I know, I look forward to, uh, working with my reading buddy each week and getting to know him and helping him with his, uh, reading skills. The other program that's the city is working with the schools on is their new career academies. Each of the high schools next year will have a career academy, uh, and the city is helping with their programs for IT, police, or criminal justice and finance, uh, next year. Government efficiency, uh, is the next, uh, council priority. We've looked at that both in how we, uh, apply that outwardly in terms of how we work with other agencies. And so we've got a number of shared services such as mutual aid agreements, uh, ambulance service through Emsa, shared communications and our regional water supply. But we're also looking at that internally as we look at how we might improve, uh, the delivery of services. Uh, the, the Development Services Code Enforcement Division is with the additional positions that they've got. We'll be adding a, a new shift that will cover weekends so they won't be using overtime to cover weekends and, um, they'll be, uh, looking at lowered costs there. And then Parks and Recreation Department is moving several functions that were in the recreation and their grounds maintenance line of business into the horticulture line of business, creating a new horticulture and gardens line of business. And finally, as we look at priorities, ensuring citizen safety, uh, increases in the Police Department staffing are proposed in FY13 with the addition of twelve police officers in the patrol division, four each, four and each, one in each of the four patrol divisions and one on each shift. There'll be three additional detectives proposed in investigations and two will be assigned to work assaults while the third will work sex crimes. We have four civilian investigation specialists being added to take reports and investigate non-priority cases. Department believes this will provide better service to citizens and will, who will receive faster service and free up uniformed officers to conduct higher priority investigations. Department's adding two cyber and crime investigators to, uh, improve the capabilities to fight illegal activities that are occurring or are being coordinated online. And finally, the Police Department is adding a senior crime scene investigator position and this civilian position will allow the department to, uh, free up a uniformed officer as this civilian takes on this investigative work. The Fire Department is, uh, includes funding for an, uh, fire apparatus mechanic that was cut in FY10. And in addition, we have the funding for the twenty-nine positions that were funded by the Safer Grant. Uh, that grant is running out, uh, in May of next year, and so we have funding for that. As we look at the revenue here for the, uh, operating funds, we have five-hundred-and-ninety-four million dollars in total. Taxes are the largest piece of that at almost sixty percent. Our fees and charges, which include franchise fees and business licenses, the ambulance fee, make up about twenty-six percent and transfers in coming in from the trust such as Aqua for water operations or from the Airport Trust for airport operations. So again, five-hundred-and-ninety-four-point-one million dollars. On the general fund side of things, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-point-three million dollars is the total with sales tax again making up over half of that, fifty-two-point-four percent. Other taxes, uh, and franchise fees around ten, eleven percent, fines at five-point-eight percent and, uh, fees and charges at sixteen-point-eight percent. Our revenue assumptions for next year in the general fund, I'll try to hit these quickly here. For sales tax, we're looking at four-point-nine-five percent growth in the current year and then three percent on top of that for FY13. And that's based on the Oklahoma City University, uh, input from, in their forecast. As you'll recall, Russell Evans, uh, spoke to the council at the workshop in January. This is an updated forecast that he provided us with at three percent. And so our projection is for two-hundred-and-three-point-one million dollars in FY13. And if we'll go to the next slide, what you'll see here is, had we kept up with our average of four percent growth there from FY09, uh, you'd see us, at more at, or in the range of two-hundred-and-sixteen million dollars as our sales tax growth. So while we've experienced the significant growth in the last couple of years, we're still not quite to where we would have been had we not had the recession. Yes?
Fifty percent of our general fund is sales tax?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I thought it was more. Is that, is that the way it's been five years ago, ten years ago? It's about fifty percent?
Yeah, it's, it's remained pretty stable.
It stayed very, because taxes overall are about sixty-two percent, sixty-three percent if you take the use tax and the taxes we get from the state. But just sales taxes stayed around fifty-two, fifty-three percent or less.
I think it was fifty-four percent one year, but, but yeah, it's...
If we'll move on to the next slide there. Use tax, uh, we're projecting growth of three percent off our adjusted base for next year. Uh, franchise fees are projected to increase just only slightly at zero-point-two percent primarily because of actual decline we're projecting in O-G and E, just because last summer was such an exceptionally hot summer, we're not projecting, we're projecting a more normal summer, but we'll have to wait and see how that turns out. Uh, licenses, permits and fees are expected to show minimal growth, uh, and specifically building permits, the largest source there, uh, we're projecting to be flat. As we look at fines and forfeitures, we're looking at a small increase of about one percent next year primarily due to parking fine increases. Uh, again, with more spaces and more meters downtown, we expect, uh, uh, additional parking revenue, parking fine revenue as well. And, uh, overall, we're looking at two-point-one percent, uh, growth for the general fund, uh, which totals about three-hundred, which totals three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-point-three million dollars. On the expenditure side, again, I'll just hit these quickly. Uh, about half of our budget in the operating budget, uh, is public safety. The operating budget includes more than general fund, includes our police and prior sales tax and, uh, on the public services side, it includes our utilities and, uh, Stormwater Drainage Fund. And on Culture and Recreation, that includes the zoo sales tax and the hotel motel tax as well. Uh, general government is all funded within the general fund, makes up about six-point-two percent of the total. If we look at the general fund specifically, the, the pieces of pie shift a little bit with public safety taking up a bigger portion at sixty-two-point-nine percent. General government is a little bit bigger again because it's only funded through the... General government is a little bit bigger, again, because it's only funded through the general fund. Public services get smaller in this pie at 17.3%, but that's because the utilities and stormwater drainage are not part of the general fund. So that piece gets a little bit smaller there. Culture and recreation at 10.1% is the Parks and Recreation Department and our funding for the operation of the Cox Convention Center and Chesapeake Energy Arena. As we look at the expenses by the categories that the Municipal Budget Act requires us to use, personal services make up 72.8%, other services at about 20%, and then the other three there, capital supplies and transfers, add up to about 7% in total. When we look at the number of positions in the budget, we've got an increase of 85 positions proposed for FY13 for a total of 4,511, which puts us back at about where we were in fiscal year 2001. With that, you've got there with you the budget book, and I'd be happy to walk through that with you, but maybe at this hour, maybe we'll save that for next week, and we can kind of just do that at the very beginning of the finance committee meeting. You've got attached also in the presentation the schedule for departments. I will note, we had one error on there. I put development services on there twice. We've corrected on the slide. But next week, we'll have fire, police, and transit. The week after that, parks, public works, and utilities. And on June 5th, development services, information technology, and airports. And on June 5th, we'll have a public hearing where folks can provide input if they'd like to, with June 12th being budget adoption and the fiscal year beginning on July 1st. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Again, we'll have some more opportunities during the finance committee meetings to go in more depth about the budget there.
Do the council have any questions?
Vice Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment. And my comments from last year are supported by Doug and Craig. Y'all did great, being the winning that, or receiving the distinguished budget presentation award, and then the certificate of excellence from ICMA. Those things just don't happen. It certainly demonstrates a lot of effort and hard work by your department, as well as all the various department heads contributing to this process. I think it's great. And to receive a AAA rating from the bond advisors is really another quite accomplishment. So I think it's just a great job.
Thank you very much. We have an excellent staff. We appreciate that.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would also like to commend the report, and especially one particular area, and that is code enforcement, that the additional six code enforcement offices. I think it means so much to the preservation of the quality of life in our neighborhoods and with the challenge that they have been up against with the growing, the growth of this city. I'm just really proud to see that we have come to their aid to assist them in the duties that they do. And I think this is going to be a fantastic improvement in reference to some of the challenges as it relates to code enforcement issues and also the weekend shifts. Thank you.
Any other councilmen have any comments? Seeing none, Mr. City Manager, would you like to, thank you Doug for your presentation, Craig for your support over there. Any comments on the sales tax before we go to the change in bulk?
No, just pointed out that April was a very good month for us. It was about 12% over last year, so a very strong month for us.
Very good. Do you have anybody coming in for this bulk waste collection day?
No, we're just making some public notice. We're making some changes in Ward 4, basically, on some bulk pickup. Marcia is available to answer any questions that anybody may have on that.
Thank you, sir. Citizens to be heard, Roman Lusanyuk. Roman, if you would please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Roman Lusanyuk. My address, the property that we are working on is 612 North S24. And the property we acquired that in 2007 at the sheriff auction. And in the county records, it shows that it is a duplex and property in a back garage apartment, a residential. However, on the city records, it does not show that it is a duplex. And in the planning department, where we tried to pull the permit for the electricity so we can actually finalize and bring a building back from the history that is built in 1919, both properties. And the duplex going back, it was built as one property, however, later on, it was changed to a duplex. However, there is no plans in the city that it is a duplex. However, what we're trying to do is try to see if we can actually get this property and actually finalize it and move in some people to live there. There is, it's very close to the, a lot of teenagers in that area renting properties in that area. And pretty much if the property is going to be vacant, we will have a lot of homeless people try to break in and steal in all the materials that we already invested into it.
Thank you for coming down. Bob Teener's sitting right here in the end. We'll meet with you and discuss it and hopefully take care of it. Thank you for coming down. Palmer Harris.
How you doing?
Good. So if you would give your name and address and make your comments.
Well, I just recently got this address. My name is Palmer Harris, and I just recently got this address, is 1033 North Walker.
Go ahead and address the council, please, sir.
My concern is probably a little selfish, and I'm trying to choose my words correctly. And I'm concerned about my public safety. Because I feel that I've been harassed and threatened by some police officers in the city of Oklahoma City, and I'm very concerned about that. And I want to know what exactly I can do about this situation.
All right, sir. I'll tell you what, we're going to have a.
Well, we'd be happy, if there's some issues out there, we'd be happy to address those. There's certainly a process in place for you to file a complaint that can be investigated. If you have some concerns about the police, and we'll get you lined up to file those complaints so we can investigate those.
So if you just wait right here, we'll have somebody meet with you and address the next step in the process, okay?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
That concludes our business. We do have executive session?
Yes, sir.